This is the Village Around Lake Beach Council meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven oh one P M. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Husk?
Here.
Trustee Davis?
Here.
Trustee Valdez? Trustee Cleveland?
Here.
Trustee Ibarra? Trustee Stout?
Here.
Mayor Nichols?
Here. All right, let the record show we do have a quorum present, and can we stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Good evening, all. We are going to start with our approval of the agenda, um, and tonight, um, we are going to move, uh, item N and O of our business to the top of the list, um, to accommodate. And, uh, if I could, can I get our approval of the corrected agenda?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then our approval of the meeting minutes for October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Any corrections or changes needed there? If not, can I have a motion, please? So moved by trustee Cleveland, uh, second by trustee Stout. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the eyes have that as well. Um, we're also on approval of a special meeting minutes for September seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I didn't see anything that needed corrected. If no one else does, can I have a motion and a second for that as well?
All moved.
So moved by trustee Stout, a second by trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have that as well. Um, expenditures tonight, I need an approval for three, three million, um, oh, where are we? Three million, eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Uh, Susan Griffin?
I guess I'm on.
Yep.
Um, yes, exactly, three million, uh, big, a big, uh, warrant or bill pay this, this month, mostly due to the fact that we had a half a million dollar bond payment, uh, out the door, some monies that needed to go get transferred, property tax monies that we collected that go to the police pension fund. We had a couple of big payouts, uh, for construction projects, the street program, Peter Baker, uh, Burger Excavating, like, and then we paid for Lake County, uh, Public Works for the sewer and surcharge, and, um, then we always have the Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them on the report.
We did have a time to review these in the committee of the whole, and, uh, again after, if anyone have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, can we go ahead and get the, uh, approval of the expenditures and then three million, eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighteen cents?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by trustee Davis, I mean trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Husk. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I'm sorry, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee, let's see, Valdez isn't here. Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, the eyes have that as well. Moving on to ratifications, we have none tonight. Um, committee of the whole reports, I don't believe we have any either. Um, for the mayor's report, uh, item one, uh, the mayor's photo contest from, um, July and August, and then the, uh, awards were picked in September and October. Um, we have our third place, um, Matous, um, Nelinsy, he's not here tonight, um, I will take this to him, and in second place, Irma Med- Medus- Jezuski? Majeski? I want to thank you guys for coming up and come and see us tonight. I'll walk out here.
Yeah.
Thank you for your submittal, appreciate it greatly. And our first place award, uh, Marshall Villia.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, thank you guys. I actually have the wall here.
Actually, the second place, we don't have it, we didn't have, have it, uh, framed up yet, because it was a print. This one was a, uh, um, canvas style. But we thank you very much. Um, the second item, um, what's that? Yeah. The second item that we had for the mayor's business, uh, tonight, um, the intergovernmental personal benefit cooperative presentation is not going to go tonight, um, that'll be pushed more towards January now. Just so you know, because the rest of it is going to be a lot of boring business, you do not have to stay, and we greatly appreciate you coming in, um, but thank you again for submitting. We'll give it just one minute so we can let them know that they can, as it will be boring, we'll let you know you don't have to stay, but we appreciate you coming in and seeing us. Thank, thank you for the submittal. Uh-huh, no, no problem, thank you, it looks great on the wall. Oops. Thank you, too. All right, so we'll move on to the clerk's report. Do we have anything tonight?
No, we do not.
Nothing from the clerk, so we will be moving on to business item. It would have been A, but I believe we're going to go on to, um...
Item N.
N and O, yep. So if you'd like.
You can take the mask off at the, at your discretion. Uh, your, your contract first.
Okay. Uh, good evening, my name's Anthony Moselli with Spear Financial. Um, so item N is a contract for municipal advisory services. I have a, uh, brief presentation that I, that I put up, I'll, I'll run through really quickly, you know, Susan's doing the slides. Uh, excuse me, Spear Financial, uh, we are a, uh, firm of municipal advisors, we're the most active municipal advisory, uh, firm in the state of Illinois, uh, so we work with, uh, many neighboring communities. Susan, if you want to just go down a few slides, I won't bore you all. You can keep going. Yeah, there you go. So, um, uh, we are a, a small firm, uh, based here in Chicago, as, as well as an office in Waterloo, Iowa, sixteen employees, uh, nine of which are, are registered municipal advisors, including myself, um, and then if you want to go to the next slide. Um, and so as mentioned, we do approximately two hundred transactions a year, um, and we are the most active advisor in the state of Illinois. I've got a list, I know it's impossible to see, of just a few other communities that we serve, uh, in the area. Um, and then in terms of, of rankings, if you go to the next sides, slide, Susan, um, again, uh, this is, uh, the rankings for Illinois based on new money issues, uh, and, um, we are the number one municipal advisor, held that ranking for, for twenty-five years, yeah, over twenty-five years, and excluding education, I like that the best, because it, it shows how, how much we do, but, uh, new money issues, eighty-two last year.
Thank you, it helps.
No, I can't see.
I'm trying to find it on my computer, I'm like, oh, wait a second, I don't have that, do I?
So, um, you know, I, I don't want to spend it, uh, too much time just reading through the entire book here and wasting all of your time, but, um, uh, I'm going to go through tonight the, the financing options, uh, for the G O issues, so we just wanted to set the table with what my firm does and what we are. We're a municipal advisory firm, we do not buy or sell, I'm not a broker dealer, um, I, I work as fiduciary to municipalities throughout the state of Illinois for the issuance of bonds. Uh, the contract that I, that I have in front of you is, uh, our standard contract, um, and for the issuance that we'll be talking about later, which will be approximately ten million dollars, um, the standard fee formula that I put in would have equated to about a twenty-five thousand dollar fee, uh, however, I've capped that at twenty thousand for, for this issuance, uh, which is, uh, as you look through your report, of five thousand dollars under the five million dollar deal you did in two thousand and sixteen, so just trying to be aggressive and reasonable for this transaction.
Perfect, thank you. So on item N then, a resolution authorizing and approving an award of contract to Spear Financial, um, and a not to exceed of twenty thousand, I believe you said, um, can I have a motion and a second?
Second.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by trustee Stout, and can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, the eyes have that. Item O, a motion to approve the proposed bond in the amount of up to nine point eight million, I believe, um, and I'll let you go ahead and speak on that, it's good.
Sure, so, uh, working with, uh, Mark and Susan, um, we've discussed a, a number of bond scenarios which are in your packet. Uh, first and foremost, the two thousand and ten recovery zone bonds, um, are, are callable and can be refinanced for savings. We have two other issues that are also callable, but because of how short they are and the fact that they're going to be paid off relatively soon, there's not any savings from refinancing those, however, there is savings from refinancing the two thousand and ten bonds. Based on current rates, it was about eighty thousand dollars in savings, or, uh, just under five percent of refunded par, and that, those two thousand and ten bonds were, were recovery zone bonds that were issued as taxable bonds, and you get a, a subsidy from the federal government, uh, equal to forty-five percent of the interest. The savings that I'm mentioning is net of that subsidy, so it's, it's net-net, even the fact that you're losing the subsidy, you're still saving money by refinancing those as tax exempt bonds. So, so that's approximately one point four, one point five million dollars of the nine point eight. Um, the remaining amount is, is for capital, um, and in your packet, I know Susan and, and Mark had laid out the, the capital items, uh, that they were looking at financing. The initial model, um, that was prepared, uh, I think in two thousand and sixteen, showed you guys coming to the market every five years for about five million dollars, um, in order to accelerate some of that capital and take advantage of the low rates, uh, the, the thought was to go up to the, what's called the bank qualification limit, which is, uh, ten million dollars, so getting right up to that limit, getting as much capital as you can while taking advantage of the bank qualified interest rates. The model that we have, uh, shows how, with doing this and then still staging in those later issues, you have a, an overall debt service pattern that's continuing still to de- decrease, so you're not incurring any more payments down the road, uh, while getting this cash in. The rate I had assumed in my model, and I can't, sorry, you can't see the model, but the rate I had assumed in my model, uh, for the new money bonds for a twenty-year, approximately ten million dollar issue, uh, was two point eight percent, which, which in this market is conservative for a double A two rated credit, you'd be probably closer to two to two and a quarter percent. So, you know, trying to get in the market soon, take advantage of rates before what they seem to be increasing, you know, day to day here, um, and, and taking advantage of those bank qualified, uh, interest rates while taking savings under refunding, so that, that was the, the proposal, um, and, and the third scenario that we, we had provided.
So we, we do have a savings then because of the interest rates at the time, but, uh, does it have any, any impact on our rating at all by going up to the ten million?
No, uh, you know, there's a lot of factors that could take into account for a bond rating, um, it's, you know, the amount of debt that you have is approximately ten percent of your rating, uh, you're not in a situation where that amount of debt is going to materially impact your rating.
I didn't think so, I did want to double check, though. All right, so then, on the motion to approve the proposed bond in the amount of up to nine point eight million, anyone else have any questions or concerns? I know we went over it a little bit in the committee of whole, and we appreciate you coming out tonight to give us the more information. Um, can we have a motion and a second, please? So moved by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
The eyes have that as well. All right, thank you very much, we'll move on back to item, I believe it was A. All right, we will be, and thank you for coming, we'll, we'll, we'll let you slide out, too, so you don't have to sit through the rest of this. Greatly appreciate it. Business item A, um, a resolution honoring school board members on school board members' day. If we could, um, get a motion, uh, actually, we read it first, Scott?
I think that's what you done?
Yep, so if we could, go ahead and clerk, if you could read the...
Resolution honoring school board members on school board members' day. Whereas, school board members are elected to sit and trust for their diverse communities, and in that capacity, are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children, and whereas, school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas, school board members are responsible providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students, and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas, school board members adopt pal- public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policies, and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas, school board members selfless, selflessly volunteer countless, countless hours to public service with no compensation. And whereas, school districts have faced enormous challenges over the past two years, and the strong dedicated leadership provided by the Round Lake Area Schools Community Unit District One One Six, Board of High School District Number One Twenty-four, Board of Education, Grayslake Community High School, Number One Twenty-seven, Number of Education, Board of Education and Grayslake Community Consolidated School District, Number Forty-six, Board of Education, have allowed student learning and success to continue. And whereas, employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members generously, generously leading support and time. Employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and communities they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas, decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life and safety in their communities, placing them as the front line of American democracy, therefore be it resolved by the village of Round Lake Beach that we proclaim November fifteen, two thousand and twenty-one as school board members' day, as we honor those citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children and our future leaders.
Thank you very much, um, and I will then ask for a motion and a second for the resolution honoring the school board members on school board member day. So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, thank you very much. Item B, uh, um, a resolution authorizing and approving an award of contract to Compass Minerals, America Incorporated. Scott Hiltz?
Yes, thank you, uh, mayor and the board. Um, actually, the next three items were all, uh, discussed as one, um, item at the committee meeting, um, Compass Minerals was the state bid for our rock salt for the, um, winter season, and then, um, Morton's was another vendor, uh, for rock salt, and then the other one was our, uh, beet heat, um, which is for our anti-icing.
All right, so we, that, we do have item B, C, and D, um, I, the item B, resolu- the resolution authorizing the improvement award of contract to Compass Minerals, America Incorporated, can I have a motion, please?
All moved.
So moved by trustee Husk. Second by trustee Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, business item C, we have discussed it, um, the resolution authorizing and approving an award of contract to Morton's Salt. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, second by, second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, eyes have that as well. Business item D, a resolution authorizing and approving an award of contract to K-Tech Specialty Coatings. A motion, please? So moved by trustee Stout, second will take by trustee Cleveland, and a roll call vote for this as well?
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
All right, the eyes have that. Business item E, a resolution improving the intergovernmental agreement with Round Lake School District One Sixteen for the purchase of rock salt. Scott?
Yes, thank you again, um, this item is a renewal of a I G A that we've approved, um, the last several years since nineteen, or two thousand and seventeen, uh, this is, this however, is a three-year, uh, I G A, um, since it's worked out that they, we purchase salt, um, in the amount of three to five hundred tons for the school district, we store it, and then, um, they reimburse us, um, for using salt during the winter season.
It's a way, way that saves us all a little time and a little money, I, as well, because we're buying more in bulk, I guess.
Correct, we, we have access to the state and county, um, bids.
Thank you very much, can we have a motion and a second for the approval of the intergovernmental agreement for a three-year deal for Round Lake School District One Sixteen, purchase of rock salt? So moved by trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by trustee Stout, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, moving along then, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement for traffic signal maintenance with the state. Scott?
Yes, again, this is a renewal of a, actually, ten-year intergovernmental agreement that just expired in two thousand, or, yeah, two thousand and twenty-one, um, it is, um, these are traffic signals that are owned by the state of Illinois, but however, since it's in the boundaries of the village, we have to play, pay a portion of our fair share for maintenance and, um, energy.
All right, this will be a ten-year, you said, Scott, again?
Uh, that is correct, a ten-year agreement, that's what the last agreement was.
An ordinance approving the intergovernmental agreement for traffic signal maintenance, uh, for a ten-year I G A with the state, can I have a motion, please? So moved by trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by trustee Husk, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Moving on to business item G, uh, roll call, uh, a resolution approving the rebuild Illinois M F T, resolution, resolution for design engineering. Director Hiltz?
Thank you again, um, this item is, um, to authorize the rebuild Illinois funds, um, that were issued to the village earlier this year, um, however, to use these funds for design engineering, we have to go through the M F T process, which is to approve a resolution, um, for design engineering for the state of Illinois, and, um, the state will approve a contract with Gee Walt and the village, um, to be executed for the design engineering.
All right.
So I believe there's two. Yes, I believe that are two items.
That's just one item is all I have on the...
I think the contract is part of the resolution. Is that right, Scott? One action item.
All right, so we have a resolution approving the rebuild Illinois M F T, resolution for design engineering, can I have a motion, please? So moved by trustee Stout, a second. Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, business item H, moving on to Kate, Portillo, uh, ordinance granting certain variances in departures for the property at seven fifteen West Rollins Road.
Thank you, Mayor Nichols and trustees, this is, uh, the variances, uh, requested by the petitioner for the property at seven fifteen West Rollins, um, the petitioner came before the, um, board, uh, at, at our October meeting, and there were some requests made to, um, shore up drainage plans, and those were, um, reviewed and approved by the village engineer, and so therefore, this is before you for vote.
All right, thank you, we did discuss this in the committee of the whole as well for the property at seven fifteen West Rollins Road, uh, ordinance granting certain variances and departures, can we have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Husk. Second. Second by trustee Davis. All in favor, um, I'm sorry, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Eyes have that as well. Business item I, an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property at two fifty West Rollins Road. Kate?
Thank you again, mayor and trustees, this is, um, a special use permit that went before the planning and zoning commission earlier this month, um, village ordinance requires that all drive-throughs be authorized by special use permit, and, um, it was, um, in, as it relates to the, uh, C C Rs for this parcel, the determination was made that this relates to private property and is not, um, in the purview of the village. The petitioner has, uh, already provided revised plans that, um, bring that site into full compliance with ADA parking regulations, and it's before you, um, for vote tonight.
Perfect, thank you, um, I know we did discuss this, it's also in the committee of whole, so if we can, an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property at two fifty West Rollins Road, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Cleveland, a second by?
Second.
Trustee Stout, as a second, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
All right, item J, a resolution approving the fire department permit waiver fee for stations two and three here in Round Lake Beach, um, Kate?
Thank you again, um, also discussed at committee of the whole, but, um, the greater Round Lake Fire Protection District, um, going to, they're planning on, um, some renovations to fire, um, station two and three, and have requested, um, to have their permit fees, um, waived for both projects, and so, um, in the spirit of, um, being a partner agency, um, this is before you, um, for vote, uh, by resolution.
Perfect, thank you. Again, there, there, there are no additional outside costs, um, to us for this, um, so if we could, can we get the resolution approving the permit waiver fee for the fire department? So moved by trustee Cleveland, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Davis, and a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
A business, uh, motion, eyes have that as well. Uh, resolution approving an agreement with Dogwood Land L L C, uh, Mark Rooney?
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking for approval of a contract with that LLC, which is a Mark Janik, who has, uh, his, as you see in his resume, he was a urban planner at Barakew's Landscape Architect, and then urban planner from, uh, University of Wisconsin. So he comes to us with a great deal of experience in the public sector and in the private sector, coming before boards and commissions to gain approvals for... coming before boards and commissions to gain approvals for developments. So he will have all the duties that would normally be the employment of an economic development director and a community development director position as a full-time staff member. But under this contract, we're approving for a total of one thirty-five, one hundred and twenty thousand, and then fifteen thousand in his overhead costs, which saves us for a comparable position at that level of about twenty-five thousand dollars in other costs if he was our employee. And I'd like to thank Ansel Glink and Scott Puma for helping to draft this, to include and enumerate all the duties and assignments he'll have. And it is necessary too, because he once was an IMRF employee, and we needed to do it in this form of this contract to be clear for the village as well as the limited liability company. And we have other contractors that the village has used recently in lieu of hiring employees. And we find this to be the best fit and the lower, lowest dollar amount for the quality we'll receive.
Perfect. I know we have all discussed this as well. So can I get the resolution approving the agreement with Dogwood Land LLC? So moved by Trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by Trustee Husk. And a roll call, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Moving on to business item L, an ordinance approving changes to the structure of the police department. Trustee, Chief Rivera, do you want to speak on this?
Thank you, mayor. We spoke about this at the committee of the whole. Basically, what we're asking is, currently, the ordinance required, limited us at forty officers, sworn officers. We're in a unique position where we've been able to stay ahead of the hiring curve that has been plaguing the nation. So to continue to stay ahead of that, we were requesting to move it to forty-two. We'll remain budgeted at forty, but when we have the opportunity to bring on, when we know we have departures imminent, this gives us stability to get ahead of the hiring process, especially with the limited access to academies that could push us back nine to twelve months for vacancies. So we are requesting it be raised to forty-two so that we can fill the vacancies that we are expecting this December and January. But we're going to remain budgeted at forty.
Perfect, thank you very much. As we have discussed, we've talked about this already in the committee whole. So can we get an approving of the changes to the structure of the police department from forty to forty-two officers? It will not affect the budget. So moved by Trustee Cleveland. Second by Trustee Stout. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
The ayes have that as well. We'll move on to business item M, a motion to approve the estimated tax levy for tax year 2021 in the amount of three million one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. This can go down, but we do have to have this in by December. And it can only go down, it cannot go up. So that's why we're approving it now for that total. Susan, do you want to discuss?
I made a few changes in the memo just to update on what had transpired at the committee of the whole. Basically, there was a consensus to go with option number three, which is a two point three percent increase in the levy for the total amount that the mayor cited, three million... I apologize here.
One sixty-four nine ninety-seven.
Right, thank you. Three million one sixty-four nine nine seven, which is sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars more than last year, of which about forty thousand of that, excuse me, thirty thousand of that goes just for pensions. The remaining balance then will go to the other corporate levies. The impact to a home with a value of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is about four dollars a year for the non-pension portion of the levy. But the total impact, including the pension levies, is seven dollars on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
As we've discussed this at the committee whole, can I have a motion to approve the estimated tax levy for the year 2021 in the amount of three million one hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars? So moved by Trustee Davis.
Second.
Second by Trustee Stout. Roll call, please.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
All right.
Mayor?
We will have an ordinance in December's meeting to approve this amount if there's no questions in between.
Correct. So we'll have the ordinance for what we just approved.
Yes.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Item N and O, we have already discussed. We've moved it up to the top of the list. So we'll be going on to item P, a motion to approve the voluntary vaccination personnel policy. Mark?
That heading describes the policy. It is all incentive-based. There is no downside negative toward our employee group if they come in currently with a vaccination card showing that they've had the one-shot Johnson &amp; Johnson or the two-shot regime of the Moderna or Pfizer, they'll immediately be eligible for that one thousand dollar incentive. And they have till January sixteenth, if they've not been vaccinated, to do so and receive the incentive. It also has a component that if they do have a breakthrough having been vaccinated, that we will not charge, you know, their time off, and they'll be eligible for workers' comp by the village point of view on that program. So it is, it is all incentive, no negativity to the vaccination policy. So it is an incentive, not a mandate.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the voluntary vaccination personnel policy, please?
So moved.
So moved by Trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Trustee Stout. And a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis? Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. Item O, resolution authorizing and approving an award of contract to FMC, Vilas Media Consultant.
And that, in that dollar amount of the eighteen thousand dollars that we perceive that we'll need for the rest of this budget year. And then we'll have it in the budget going forward at some dollar amount to be determined in the future. And he's worked on the webpage, both the village webpage, working with Chief Rivera on the police, and our Facebook presence.
All right. Can we get that resolution authorizing and approving the award of contract to FMC? So moved by Trustee Davis. A second, please?
Second.
Trustee by Stout, Trustee Stout for a second. And a roll call vote again, please.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that as well. We have completed our items of business. We are now to the point of open public participation. If we have anyone from the public that'd like to stand up and speak, please come up, announce your name. It doesn't look like we're going to have one tonight. We do have executive session tonight for probable pending litigation, land acquisition, sale of land, executive session minutes and personnel. So if I could, a roll call vote to go into executive session, please. Can I have a motion? So moved by Trustee Cleveland.
Second.
Second by Trustee Husk. All in favor? Roll call vote.
Trustee Husk?
Aye.
Trustee Davis?
Aye.
Trustee Cleveland?
Aye.
Trustee Stout?
Aye.
All right, the ayes have that. Executive session, we're going to be starting at about seven forty.